This is a public hearing of the Newark Board of Education, February 2nd, 2017. This public hearing will be followed by a special meeting of the Newark Board of Education.
Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 1046 at SEC, adequate notice to this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger and by distribution to the administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A confident meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a public hearing for Wednesday night, February 2nd, 2017 pursuant to NJAC 6A 261011.
Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam SBA.
Thank you, Counsel. Good evening, members of the community, members of the board, Madam Chair. We are here this evening for a public hearing on the district's lease agreement. The district is looking to move from its headquarters currently located in this building to a new headquarters site. Before I do my presentation this evening, I will ask Superintendent Serf to provide us with some brief comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and thank you, members of the public, for being here. I will tell you that I am absolutely intrigued to watch this evening unfold. It's interesting. We actually are all say that we are committed to doing what is in the best interests of the 50,000 children served here and doing what's in the best interest of the district, but this is a moment that is reminiscent of earlier times. It is reminiscent of a time when there are a lot of interests at stake, a lot of legitimate interests at stake, that may or may not conflict with what is in the best interests of the district and the students. So I'm very intrigued to see whether collectively we can keep our eyes on our mission and our beliefs, or whether there are other influences at work that are going to contribute to that process. Very intrigued, very intrigued indeed. So I look forward to tonight's testimony and tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Serf. I will direct the community to a brief PowerPoint presentation which will provide the details of our lease arrangement, why we're doing this, where we're going, and what it ultimately will cost the district. But before we do that, we need to talk a little bit about the history of the district. In 1990, the Newark Board of Education entered into a lease agreement with Harts Mountain for Two Cedar Street. We occupy three floors in this building and use some basement space. Those three floors and basement, that lease is still in effect today. We are under the original lease that we received and have continued to amend that under possibly three to four superintendents. So as you know, the district has been faced in the past four to five years with significant financial challenges. Those challenges include our reducing our central office FTEs, full-time equivalents last year, to a total of 161 positions. We have also reduced our operating expenses for the district in the last two years for a total of $161 million. Those are significant challenges for any district. They are significant also because this district has been under state control since 1995 and state funding has remained flat since 2007. 2007, ladies and gentlemen. During that time, we have had increasing enrollments, we have seen increase in charter schools, which also drain funds from the public schools because they are public schools and the money follows the child based on the charter school laws. We have seen all of this happen. So as we continue to face our future, it is imperative that we begin to look at ways that, one, we can push more money to the classroom, two, we can reduce our operating expenses, and, three, we can be sure that we are effective and efficient. So I turn your attention to the back for our whiteboard presentation. Thank you. So my first slide. In determining, based on the challenges that I have indicated we face, we needed to look at what we needed to do to reduce our operating expense in this building. We needed to identify lower-cost and more-efficient solutions to help minimize cuts to schools and teachers. Occupying three floors of almost 181,000 square feet, and you will see that in a little while, we needed to reduce that based on the number of positions we reduced out of the central office last year. Our timing is significant because our lease here ends at the end of July 2017. We are not looking to engage in a new lease with our current landlord, not having an efficient layout in this building. We wanted to minimize our cost overrun, risk, and stabilize our annual budget. We needed to secure a gross lease, not a triple-net lease, and that lease needed to be with a turnkey provision on build-out. We wanted to have space to allow us to have community outreach, things like our contact center, like our family engagement center, and we wanted an opportunity for student learning. As I go through this presentation, you will see in the floor plan that there is information showing that we will have an educational technology component on the lower level of the building we are proposing to occupy. In order to understand what the cost is here, you need to look at this slide. So this is what is currently in existence for our two-seater lease. We actually have -- I can't see that far, so let me look at my sheet. We actually have a current contractual base rent of $2.9 million a year. You will notice the three N's at the end. In real estate terms, that is triple-net. It does not include all costs. Our operating expenses, which are charged in addition to our net rent, are $608,000 a year. Our real estate taxes, also in addition to our net rent, are $611,000 a year. Other direct expenses, which are estimates for security costs, cleaning costs, water and sewer, natural gas, which are incurred on a direct basis, are paid by us for a total of $467,000 a year. So if you subtotal those expenses, our expenses here are $4.6 million. In addition, we pay for electric outside of our common areas, which is another $279,000, for a grand total from August 2016 to July 2017 of $4,955,000, million dollars. Okay? $4,955,000. Sorry for that. I got to catch my breath, and I'm a little nervous, believe it or not, but no problem. Okay. So let's turn around and talk about where we'd like to go. It is no secret to anybody in this room that we have advertised in our public notice that we are anticipating moving to 765 Broad Street. It is the White Prudential Building that is two blocks south of here, located on Bank Street and Broad Street. Our contractual base rent for this particular rental will be 28 over a 16-year term. Actually, no. That's full square gross. It's $28,860 a year, right? We'll have operating expenses of $1,001.07, right? And that estimated increase in operating expenses is the increase over our base year rent, because our base year rent will include our operating expenses. It is a gross lease, not a triple-net. In millions. Thank you, Superintendent. We have our real estate tax escalations, which are also over our base year and are an increase of $1 million. We have other direct expenses, which are estimates for our security, I think, yes. That is only security because all other costs, cleaning, maintenance, and other operating costs, electric for our common areas, things of that nature, are included in our gross rent. We add that and we come to a subtotal of our expenses of $35,797,000 over a 16-year term lease. Our tenant electric, which is something we will have to pay regardless of where we are over that 16-year period, will be $394,000. We anticipate moving expenses of about $300,000. That is because within our gross rental, there is a turnkey full furniture build-out. So we will pick up our supplies, our materials, and move to 765 Broad. We will not need to move furniture, and that also applies not only to office space, it applies to conference rooms, storage space, common areas such as a small lunchroom that will be located on the lower level, a boardroom facility much as this with the same capacity on that lower level. So we will be able to move in on a turnkey operation. So our total projected occupancy expenses for a 16-year lease will be $39,191,000. Our annual average over the 16 years, ladies and gentlemen, will be $2.449 million. Remember the number, 4.955, for an annual currently at two-seater. Our new annual is 2.449. We average it over our annual occupancy. It turns out to be 2.506. So that is our savings, 2.506 on an annual basis. Our capital contingency, which is a capital estimate of approximately $20 per square foot, rentable square footage, is an estimate for items to be determined for other options. You must note that on this floor in this building, we have a data center. Our data center construction and equipment and operating costs are not included here. Neither were they included in the $4.955 million for our current rent in this building. So we've included that. There is no landlord allowance that needs to be included. There's a capital contingency. In good planning, we want to be sure that if we have to do some things, maybe we might have to spend another million or two in doing that. So our total projected occupancy expense and capital is $41,133,000. If you look at our annual average over 16 years, it's $2.571 million. Our average annual total savings for a 16-year term lease is $2.384 million a year. Let me say that again. $2.384 million a year. So how did we get to this particular arrangement? In the second quarter of 2016, we began to review what was available commercially in Newark. We looked at several buildings, and I will eventually show you the four finalists that we ended up with. But we began to look at available property, taking into consideration the real estate criteria that I shared with you at the beginning of this presentation. In quarter three of 2016, we issued RFPs, requests for proposals. All buildings that we were interested in as finalists were afforded the opportunity to provide us their best proposal. We indicated to them what our terms were, what we wanted to have, what we needed to have in order to make the kind of agreement that we needed to have that was in the best interest of the district. Because whatever agreement we enter into must be in the best interests of the district, it must avoid risk, it must reduce operating expenses, and most of all, it must be an efficient building. If you look at our offices in this building, you will see that there are no standards. People are in large offices, large spaces. It will be a significant culture adjustment for our staff, but it will not be a new trend. 21 years ago, when I came to this district, I came from the World Trade Center, living in a space of eight feet by eight feet. It will be traumatic. Some people will have to take plants home, some people will have to take tchotchkes home, but they will bring only what they need for work. In the fourth quarter of 16, we looked for counter-proposals and reviewed our top selections. We made sure we determined what, once again, met our criteria and would provide us the best agreement possible. We are now in the first quarter of 2017. We are reviewing terms, and we are here this evening to seek an approval from our advisory board in a special meeting that will follow this public presentation for 765 Broad Street as our final relocation option. What we have here is a chart which provides the four top candidates. On the left, you will see the current situation at Two Cedar Street, which clearly reflects, I'm sorry, the $4.955 million of current rent. We asked all of our participating groups to provide us, once again, with their best options. We looked at 765 Broad. It is listed first because you will see at the bottom in green that the average annual total cost savings is $2.3 million. It is important that you understand that the higher the number in the green savings, the better it is for the district. When you first look at this chart, your brain tells you to look for the lowest number because that's what we do in public purchasing. We look for the lowest responsive bidder. In this case, I am looking for the bidder that gives me the highest savings, which then can be returned to the classroom and ensure that our students have what they need to have a specific and appropriate learning environment to improve student achievement. So these listings show 765 Broad. We have 33 Washington, which I must add was a late addition to the review. 33 Washington was in the process of changing management and ownership when we first approached them. They were unable to provide us a proposal, but they changed hands on the 6th of January. Today is the 2nd of February. They were allowed to enter the competition and to provide a proposal. Two Cedar Street was also offered the opportunity to provide us a proposal, and you will see what they have proposed. It is a modified gross lease, and a modified gross lease means that it does not include all of our costs as the other gross leases do. And we also looked at 321 University, which is located at the corner of Market and University, and it may be known to some of you as the old MBNA building. That is the building that Cable Vision has since occupied, Bank of America has occupied, and I do know that the city is currently looking at one of those buildings. There are two buildings there with a skybridge in between. Each of these buildings are in the 97,000 to 100,000 rentable square footage range. 321 University is actually 88,683 rentable square feet. At Broad, we have a $28 million lease over 16-year term. At Washington, I think the term is a five-year with two five-year options for renewal, so that is 15 years at a full-service gross of $35,000, $35,073,000. To Cedar, their best offer has been $33,261,000 for a modified gross, which will include additional expenses, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. At 321 University, we have an offer of $36,290,000 for full-service gross. You will see that, once again, we have added operating expense escalations that happen over the course of the lease and after the base year. We have added real estate tax escalations. We have also added other direct expenses. We subtotal those expenses for a range of a low of $35,797,000 for Broad Street location to a high of $47,754,000 for the 321 University property. We've added tenant electric, once again, fairly consistent. We've added moving expenses, which will be required for all locations. Let me note that Two Cedar will require us to consolidate to two floors. We are on eight, nine, and 10. We will consolidate, should we remain here, to nine and 10. 10 becomes our primary location because we have an existing data center. I'm not going to incur the expense to move the data center to remain in the same location. That is not financially prudent. So that would require us removing everyone from the eighth floor. No, I'm sorry. Removing them first from the ninth, remodeling the ninth, putting some eighth-floor people back on nine, and then removing people from 10, remodeling 10, and putting the remaining eighth-floor people and 10th-floor people together. That is a significant and expensive undertaking that the district would have to bear the cost on based on the final proposal for Two Cedar. So then we move on, and we have our total projected occupancy expenses, once again, a low of $39 million to a high of $47 million. We see the annual average over 16 years with Broad being $2.4 million to a high of $2.9 million for 321 University. Two Cedar coming in at $2.968 million. Our average annual occupancy expense savings, once again, $2.5 million for Broad Street, $1.9 million for 321 University, with Cedar being $1.986 million. We have a capital contingency. We have no landlord allowance except at 321 University, and we have an overall total projected occupancy expense and capital of $41,133,000 at 765 Broad for a high of $49,528,000 at 321 University. Two Cedar Street is actually coming in at $52,360,000. Our annual average over the next 16 years is a low of, a high, I'm sorry, of $2.5 million for 765 Broad to a high of $3,950,000 for University, with Two Cedar coming in at $3.2 million. So we see, once again, our savings numbers reflected, $2.384 million annually at 765 Broad, $1.859 at University, and $1.682 at Two Cedar. So we take our current existing situation and we compare it to 765 Broad. So Two Cedar, we have on the far left the current situation, which I've already reviewed. In the middle, we have our proposed relocation at Two Cedar, as I have described for you, and we have our proposed relocation at 765 Broad. I will point you to the two numbers in green. At our proposed location at Two Cedar, it is $1.6 million in average annual total cost savings versus $2.384 annually at 765 Broad. So you may be asking at this point in time, what are we getting at 765 Broad? Because numbers tell you one story, but terms also tell you something additional. So the features that are most important at 765 Broad are the fact that we will realize $2 million in annual savings over a 16-year term. We will have space for community outreach and student learning, which was one of our initial real estate criteria. We will have prime locations doing there, and we will have efficient and collaborative workspace. We will be in modular furniture with unified wiring. You will hear some people say that you can plug and play that. We will be able to move offices as we need without significant construction costs because you don't have to take walls down, put walls up. We will learn to live in efficient space. We will be able to work together collaboratively on projects as we begin to have to realize greater productivity with less staff as we continue to make cuts, because the budget situation for this district, unless the school funding formula changes, and you have all read about this recently in the newspapers, this district will continue to suffer with a challenge. We are beginning to be able to attract more students. If we do not have more aid, and aid comes from two places. It is either going to be a tax levy, or it is going to be aid from the state. We currently get 80% of our aid now from the state. If those two things do not change, the district will continue to face challenges of a financial nature and have to look inward to determine how we will be efficient, effective in our operations, and be able to do the things that our students need to make them competitive in the workforce in their careers for the 21st century. Members of the community, thank you. I appreciate your patience. That concludes my presentation. Counsel?
Madam SBA, is that public participation?
Yes, Counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, these are the guidelines for public participation in the public schools. Time limits for all speakers are enforced. There's no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers are required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of this meeting is limited to those who have signed up. We have seven speakers tonight. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not permitted include, but are not limited to, naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meetings, or inciting others to do so. Public participation at board meetings is intended Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public the opportunity to address the board and the administration on issues of public concern, not as a forum for two-way dialogue with the board members or district officials. The superintendent or designee or the board chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session, or responses may be provided at a later time. The superintendent or board chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board members or district officials, repetitive and truculent speech, or other disregarded rules of the quorum are not tolerated and may subject the individual to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
Thank you. First speaker, Councilwoman Gail Chinfield Jenkins.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I wanted to share some concerns with you all, and the biggest issue is, I know that this lease is a lease that the city, I'm sorry, NPS has been trying to get out of for the last twenty years. And in that twenty-year timeframe, unfortunately, because of the rent, operating expenses, and real estate taxes, and the triple-net lease, we've spent over a hundred million dollars. And I was present fifteen years ago when there was an attempt to try to relocate under the James administration as a councilperson, and we tried to move the NPS and was unsuccessful. The attempt was made again in 2007. I was not a councilperson at the time, and the NPS was unsuccessful. I do not agree with any type of triple-net lease. I know that they are horrible, they're draining, and we have to look at the fact that a hundred million dollars has been spent on leasing properties, and we don't have a building to show for it. What could we have done with a hundred million dollars and then reinvest it back into our community? The cost of new construction for a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot building is approximately forty million dollars. I know time is of the essence, and you do not want to stay. And under the terms of expenses being added to it in a triple-net lease, I would not encourage you to stay. But the thing I would like to say is that the board members should have the opportunity to review the packages that were submitted and not be given just one option. As an elected official down the street, I know that this is the most important land transaction that is going to take place in the city of Newark. And if you're not going to build a building that you're going to own after a period of time, then please look at all the options. NPS had the opportunity to construct a building, and they didn't do it twenty years ago. So what I'm saying to the board members is, what is the rush? Why can't you all look at all the opportunities that are present and not vote this evening? I'm not trying to stop you all from doing anything but repeating history. There's been times in history when, as an elected official, we'd been given information at the last minute and asked to make a vote. And for seven months, at least, it was, NPS was aware of the fact, since July 31st, your real estate broker knew that the lease expiration date was coming up, and so did the board, so did the administration, and they made the RFPs available. So they distributed the RFPs to a select subset of buildings that could accommodate NPS requirements, not all the buildings. They said they wanted to go into the buildings that they felt was going to be in the best interest. So I'm glad to see that they did look at four buildings. But negotiations for the possible landlords were given opportunity to present the best deal. And I'm just saying, did NPS leverage the best deal for all the landlords? It was indicated by Ms. Wilson that you did. So again, if you did, did all the board members who are going to vote tonight get an opportunity to look at those proposals in advance to be able to make an informed decision? I don't want to see five hundred people laid off. I had a conversation with the superintendent, and he indicated to me that if the cost savings are not there, then you will have to dig deeper into the budget. That's not why I'm here. I am here to say to you all, exhale, take a breath. If you're not going to build a building, then are you going to make sure that you've seen all of the offers? I don't have a vested interest in which building you go into, but I would have preferred to see us use one of the older schools that's vacant and move in there for five years or a couple of years to be able to get yourselves regrouped and be able to utilize that money to build something, understanding that for five, for twenty years, we've invested a hundred million dollars of taxpayer dollars, and what do you have to show for it? Nothing in return. So I want to make sure that you look at the fact that there are other landlords who may be able to beat the terms of Seven Sixty-Five. Because now that you have a comparison, you can say to them, listen, this is what Seven Sixty-Five is proposing. Can you beat this? And if they can't, then you can vote on this at some other time. I am not trying to keep you into a building that fifteen years ago I advocated and have continually advocated because it has not been cost-effective. So the money has not gone to our children. But stop and think about the fact that if you take your time, you have the broker who is, you know, I'm not going to block anybody from making money because that's what brokers do. But you could maybe send two million dollars from the feet of this sale to Saddle Brook. What does that mean for the children of the city of Newark? Is it possible to go into, and it's about convenience. It's about the convenience of the staff, and you should be working in a collaborative workspace, and you should have any facility you go into have a turnkey operation. That's important. And to be able to just pick up your supplies and go, are other developers offering the same issue? So my question is, what is the rush? Has everyone seen all of the information in advance, had an opportunity to digest it, to see the analysis before today in order to make an informed decision? I know when we had to make a decision in regards to two-hundred-and-six, four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars that came from Port Authority that had to be allocated, and it was not to build the Prudential Arena. But when we had to make that decision that night, it was a choice of, do you shoot yourself or do you shoot your child? And I feel that you all are being put in that position this evening, not being given the opportunity to have looked at all of the proposals, weigh each and every one of them, and give your opinion as to whether or not you want to have them in here. It was stated to me that the current owners of this building, who are not giving, who has a triple-net lease, which I'm against triple-net leases, would double your rent if you were to stay here month-to-month. That's unacceptable. That is unacceptable. But in the same breath, I just want to know on the record, were you all told that it was going to be triple, I mean, it was going to be double the rent? And if you were, the gentleman who is the current landlord sent to my office a representation that he never represented that to anyone from NPS. So he needs to clarify that because that information was sent to me. So he needs to put on the record that he never represented that to NPS. I just want you all to realize that if you haven't been given the information in advance, why is there such a rush to do this? Why haven't you looked at other alternatives in making sure that we get the best bang for our buck and that we are able to not be so reliant? And Superintendent Serf said, this reminds him of what he inherited. You know, when the state came in and took over, they said that there was a deficit. Come to find out, there was a sixty-million-dollar surplus, and that money was spent ill, not to benefit the children to the maximum that it could have been, okay? And when we look at, over the years, with the, even with the Zuckerberg money or anything else, we've been spending a lot of money on consultants. So that money has not been spent to benefit our children. I think we all are on the same page, that we want to maximize the money to make sure that it stays in the classrooms, it stays with the teachers, it stays with the children. And so therefore, I'm just asking you all to consider not voting this evening. Oh, I'm finished?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right, thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
Madam Councilwoman?
I just wanted to adhere to the timeframe because I know what happens in the city of Newark.
Thank you for your comments. We did allow you, out of respect for your position, to go on for five minutes. Typically, speakers are three, but that's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's, no need to apologize. We appreciate your comments. So let me address some of them as I tried to jot them down, listening to others telling me stuff, and Superintendent Serf will back me up in other things that I have missed. You indicated that, and it was remiss of me not to indicate one of the features of our lease with Seven Sixty-Five Broad, which will provide the district with the opportunity of first offer and first right to purchase in the twelfth year of our sixteen-year lease, should our financial condition improve at that time, right? It also offers us the ability from day one of the lease to purchase the building should we see fit. There is also another term in our lease which provides us with the opportunity to, there are seven floors in Seven Sixty-Five Broad. We will be occupying the basement through the third floor. We have the ability and the first right to determine, should we wish to expand, to have contiguous space. That means we could have the fourth floor, the fifth floor, and we have first rights on those. So that addresses your issue of purchase and...
Ownership.
Yeah, and ownership. You talked about moving into a school and being able to live in a school. We did actually spend three years prior to Superintendent Serf's tenure looking at that. We looked at a number of our buildings. The issue with that is, we do not have the capital money to put into a building. We are unable, as a state-operated district, to bond for ourselves. We have to bond through the city. It is only this year that we are now beginning discussions talking about capital. So the investment, initial investment, as you know, our buildings average ninety-two years old. We have Lafayette Street built in eighteen thirty-three, oldest school in the state, as well as in the district, still in operation. The condition of our buildings is shameful at best. So moving into a school would require significant modifications, not to make it opulent or fancy, but just to make it livable, to make the building, in some cases, some of our buildings are still not ADA compliant. Many of our buildings are not at where they need to be for code in terms of what is there. We try to make our buildings as safe as possible for both our staff and our students. We estimated that it would probably cost us about, in the neighborhood, of forty million dollars to make a building right, and that is to put a secure envelope on the building, to provide proper heating, and to do the construction necessary just to make it functional from a school purpose to an office or commercial process. You talked about the fact that, did we tell someone that our rent would double? There is a provision in our lease that provides for remedies and damages, which the landlord may exercise in a real estate term called holdover. That occurs at the conclusion of your lease. That could be a range of things. So I'm not sure who provided you that information, but holdover is the status we would go into, which could cause potentially some increases in our lease in some manner, shape, or form. I am not saying that our landlord has indicated that they would, but we would be in a holdover status. Those who are in the real estate industry, and there are many here, I think understand what that means in terms. So the landlord has the negotiating power at that point in time when we go into holdover. Let me see, have I missed? Oh, you talked about how much we've spent on our lease in twenty years. I went back and looked at our records to prepare for this meeting, and since 2006, July 1st, 2006, up to today, we have actually spent forty-three million, four hundred and nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and four dollars and sixty-one cents to pay for the three floors and basement space we occupy in this building. I think I've covered all your questions. Did I miss anything?
I'm saying that total, in total of twenty years, that, I know, I'm saying, and I'm well aware of the development terms you were using.
I'm not saying...
No, no, but I'm glad you said it so that the public would understand.
I was trying to.
Okay? So the person who gave me this information, Castiano T. Milano, is the president and chief operating officer of Harts Mountain, who said that he did not have that conversation with you all in regards to doubling the rent. And it was represented to some of the board members that if you did stay, that the rent would be doubled, okay?
What was represented to board members was there is a likelihood that that could happen, not that it was definitive?
And I'm sure it would.
As I said, the landlord has...
And I'm sure it would, and that's why I'm saying he needs to put on the record that what he stated and sent to my attention, okay?
Thank you for that. I am appreciative of that.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
And I thank you all for listening.
If I may, first of all, thank you for your passion you bring to this issue. As listening to you, I actually know we share a great, a great deal in trying to get to the right place and our reflections on history. And so if I might respectfully just respond to a handful of things, just so everybody has the information. First of all, the history I was referring to is exactly the same history you were referring to. I wasn't referring to ninety-five. I was referring to the various efforts you recounted to move from a very, I think, unfavorable lease situation to a better situation, which ran into, shall we say, politics and so on.
Over the years, yes.
Yes, over the years, multiple times, politics involving Trenton, politics involving Newark. And I know we share the view that we don't want any of that to happen again. We want, whatever the right solution is, we want to find it and have the right solution measured by what protects as many teachers and what advances the educational interests of our children. I know very much that you, that you, that you share that. You're sort of, Ms. Wilson answered a couple of different questions, but I do want to make sure that everybody understands that when you ask the question, what's the rush? This is a process that has been going on now for, since the second quarter of 2016. It has been, with tremendous compliments to Ms. Wilson and her staff and the legal team, it has been going on in an orderly, public way for many months. By the way, frankly, as a person who is a reformed lawyer, allowing enormous levels of flexibility for late arrivals to show up, for people to refine their bids and so on. But at some point, we have to put a pin in it, right? Because, you know, buildings change hands and so on. So for many, many, many months, this has been, been, been going on. We explored multiple options. Ms. Wilson was able to share, I think, what she termed the finalists, but we looked at everything... everything from the NHA building, which we've had a chance to talk about, to other schools. We looked at the record for the effort to think about moving into another abandoned building and so on. So although we didn't talk about it extensively tonight, I think all of the options that you have correctly alluded to were considered. On the issue of what's the rush, I think there are actually a couple of things that make me very much want to have this resolved tonight. First of all, it is a statutory provision that says that in a holdover lease situation, the rent can be doubled. So that is, as you point out, it's not imposed by the landlord. It is enabled by a statute duly passed by the legislature of this state. So absent explicit comfort that that would not be imposed on us through a waiver or something, we have to assume that is the case. Secondly, with regard to the possibility of purchasing a building, I believe I'm right in saying, Ms. Wilson, that the 765 is the one that gives us the greatest opportunity should capital become available to actually acquire and own the building of all the various options that we have considered, which I think goes in the, on the positive side of the ledger. We did rule out moving to another part, to another building. The actual, there is an unavailability of capital that is an issue. It would be at least two years to invest capital in an old building to make it habitable and safe. It did not meet many of the substantive requirements we wanted. So it's, I think, an idea that we share would be a good idea. It turned out not to be practical and certainly not to be timely. So we would be in this building for two more years, paying $4 million a year, $4.5 million a year instead of $2.5 million. So we would immediately burn a bunch of money in rent under our current circumstances if that was the plan. So while I agree with you, it makes sense at first blush, on inspection, we concluded that it did not, it did not make sense. So, and then the other is, you know, and I really understand the respect issue about giving individuals on this board the information, and you, as you are entitled to, as a member of the city council, giving people information. But I would respectfully suggest that this is exactly the kind of thing that a board hands over to a management team to develop options, present options, and present the facts of those options for review and inspection. Because we wanted to make sure that the children of Newark would have the best possibility of the best deal, we allowed those options to continue to be refined, really right up till the very, very last minute. And then we have presented what I believe are all material facts in a cleanly packaged format, and you saw a version of that tonight. So I don't think additional time will yield material additional information. And I also don't think it is the function of a board, even a board of this quality, to do, to get into the weeds and be in the real estate, be in the real estate. That's our job. That's what we've been asked to do and to present these options for their consideration. And then the last thing I'll say is that we are very much, you know, I calculate, I keep saying the last thing and then I keep going, don't I? Sorry. Yeah, there goes. Is that I calculate this kind of thing in jobs. I calculate the kind of savings. I immediately take every savings and I divide it by about $80,000 and say, each one of those is a teacher we would have to lay off. And I know we share the goal of not doing that. So what looks like a sort of mechanical calculation on an erud spreadsheet, in fact, is very, very directly relevant to our ability to continue to make progress academically and to preserve our teachers and aides and so on to the extent we can. So I appreciate your comments, but I did want to respond in that fashion. Thank you.
I was in no way suggesting that the board members were to delve into the process of going through each individual bid. I was merely stating that as elected official who has to vote on millions of dollars and process, that in order to compare apples to apples, that they should be presented the spreadsheets and the bids and see what was being extended for a period of time, and then be able to digest them, and then have you all explain it to them, and then be able to come back at another date, not tonight, and vote. So that's all I was saying.
Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, you're trying to move us on. Thank you, ma'am.
We have a number of... Ms. Chairperson, just one other point, Ms. Chaneyfield, that is critical. It is customary and applicable in this case that the broker's fee is paid by the landlord. The district will not incur any costs for the broker's fee, so there will be no impact on the children of Newark.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I just want to caution both speakers and responders that this is the public participation section of the public hearing. We will then move into the actual special meeting, so we want to be mindful and respectful of people's time. Our second speaker, Constantino T. Milano.
Good evening.
Good evening.
He'll be right back.
Should I wait? I think I can wait for the superintendent.
He said he would just wait.
I'd like to wait for the superintendent.
He'll be right back.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Superintendent Serf, board members, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Constantino Milano. I'm President and Chief Operating Officer of Harts Mountain Industries, and I've been involved in Newark most of my life. I used to come here as a child for vacations. My family is from Newark. I'm a member of the Newark All-Stars Project. I'm very familiar with the students of the city of Newark on a personal basis. And I've been involved with this project from the beginning in 1990. And just to give you a little history, as you chose to go back in history, this building was a vacant apartment store in 1990. It required a lot of capital. We were in a severe recession. There were no developers here to complete it. We spent over $100 million in improvements and capital costs to build this building. And it didn't come cheaply. It was a project that wanted to be done by the city of Newark to renovate downtown. We didn't have a new Prudential Center. We didn't have the Prudential Center. We didn't have the path. We didn't have the new Panasonic building. It was a different world. Bring yourself back to 1990. Spent a lot of money, nobody to do it, interest rates were 10%. Very expensive money. However, we did it. And that's why the rent is where the rent is today. We started discussions with the board in September of this year for renewal of the lease. We made it clear that we would drop our rent significantly and make improvements to the building. We met for the first time with Valerie, your broker, in December, December 11th. When the process actually begun, we said we need to get into this space with our architects to develop a defined plan to give you our best and final offer. Well, there's been a lack of responsiveness, and I don't know if it was by design or not, but we got very little input on the architectural side. We're unable to complete the drawings. So on January 19th, given the lack of cooperation, we submitted an offer at $17 gross, and it's much less expensive. So what your lease is now amortized our cost of 1990. This, our offer now is at $1.7 million a year, not 4.2. 4.2 has nothing to do with anything going forward. So the way, and particularly when I looked at your analysis, I found $10 million of mistakes in our transaction. Now, there may be another competitor has a better deal than I do, and God bless you when you should move, but on our side of the ledger alone, I noticed $2.5 million in gross rent mistake. I noticed an additional $3.8 million of capital cost. Why, I don't know you have capital cost on a gross lease. Our lease is fully gross, so I don't know where that number came from. And there were $3 million additional expenses in our line. So maybe if you want to give me additional time, we can go through that. What I'm suggesting to you is that I noticed $10 million of mistakes in that analysis. And I don't know how you can possibly sit here tonight and make a determination based on these numbers. And I suggest that you give the developer's time to review these numbers, to bring mistakes or inaccuracies forward so you can make a true decision on this. Secondly, I never, no one from Harts, neither I nor any of them from Harts, ever suggested that your rent would double at the expiration of your lease. In fact, I think the lease provides for rent, single rent. And so I don't know where that came from. And if someone had the decency to sit with me and to talk about this, I would have, we could have entered into an agreement, so that wouldn't occur. But I didn't get the cooperation. I didn't get returned phone calls from some members of the board, and I wasn't able to do that. But that certainly was not the case. So in summary, you don't have accurate information in front of you. And I'll be delighted to go through this with you now, if you give me additional time. But if you, if you don't give me the time, if you don't want to go through it, I think you're making a mistake because my numbers are wrong, and I don't know if my competitors' numbers are right. They may want to take a look at it. But you don't have good information in front of you tonight to make a decision. And I suggest you give us another month to fully develop plans and give you a good offer for an extension. Because right now, our numbers are less than your alternative. And I'd be happy to sit down and go through that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mark Killogg. Next speaker, Philip R. Patton. Next speaker, James P. Rotation. Hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Radican, I'm sorry.
That would like to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Milano and team, for your comments. You have made some indications, I won't use the word accusations, but indications that there's incorrect information. The numbers that are being presented to the board are the numbers you provided. In terms of responsiveness to your inquiries, not only did you have the opportunity, unlike any other proposer, to walk through our site, you walked through it with an architect on NPS staff. You were provided the adjacencies, headcounts, and information that other proposers were provided. There was no additional information that you requested that you did not have. We actually entertained two or three proposals from you. The proposal that is listed tonight is your best proposal and therefore your final proposal. Our numbers are accurate. The numbers for your current lease are accurate. You indicated that you've presented 1.9 million dollars. Was that what you said? 1.7. The numbers we have provided are accurate. The reason that there is an additional capital contingency in this building was, as I explained, the work that needs to be done to consolidate three floors of current operations into two floors, not in the way the floors exist today, which was what you proposed to us, but actually in an efficient building design. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I represent the Berger Organization and 33 Washington Street. And I know we were a little bit late to the game due to the purchase of the building on December 30th, but I just want to make sure that if we're all comparing apples to apples, that the lease compared to 765 Broad Street over the term, we have, over the 16 years, $35.1 million as opposed to $42.5 million at 765. We also will guarantee the space on August 1st, 2017. We're offering the same exact terms in terms of the turnkey buildout, including all the furniture, and we are also, excuse me, providing equity interest to the building as well. So in terms of just numbers, if you want to compare it, we think we have this handled in every aspect. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Berger, and thank you for your comments. I need to also indicate that at 765 Broad, while it is a 16-year term, we have the first 12 months free rent. Thank you.
Next speaker, George Jorge Madruga.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, how are you? I represent the owner, the owner of basically 765 Broad. And Ms. Wilson and her group have worked with our staff to figure out the building, and we're excited to work with you and do whatever we need to do to make sure that you guys get what you need and you're able to save $40 million. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Madruga.
Thank you. So that ends the public participation section of our hearing. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn, but before I do, just to explain that we are going to take a 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene for our special meeting. At that time, we will use the public participation rules that we use at our business meeting, which means that the first 10 speakers who sign up will be able to speak. We're going to ask for the courtesy of those who have already spoken to please allow those who have not spoken to sign up first, you know, and then if you wish to speak again, if there is space, and board members also will have the opportunity at that time to speak and to ask any questions. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion. Second.
All right, Mr. Wilson, who's the second? Scotty? All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Any opposed?